So I'd like to call to order the June 18th meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education. Before you, you have the minutes from our June 4th meeting and if you could take a look at those and when I, when you have a chance if someone could give me a motion to approve those. For those who are there. Katrina, second. Brendan? All those in favor? And any? Yep, it looks like we're good. That's unanimous from everybody that was there. Everybody, yeah, everybody was there. Okay. Moving on to the agenda, tonight's agenda. I have a couple of modifications to tonight's agenda and the first being if we could move the Model UN Conference action item to immediately following the presentation in the reports and recognition. And then the second edit would be to remove the introduction of Kristy Carrero?
Carrero.
Carrero. From the reports and recognition as she is unable to join us tonight because she is at Bryan McMahon's graduation. So if I could get a motion to amend the agenda? Jen, second. Hazel? All those in favor? It's unanimous. And then if I could get a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Tom? Katrina? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, moving on to comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Do I have anyone wishing to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to reports and recognition. And the first item on our agenda is the recognition of Jean Caffrey by Ms. Pianka.
Good evening. Every year, the Connecticut Association for Gifted Education presents an award to an educator who's made a positive difference in the lives of gifted children in Connecticut. This year, when it was time for nominations, I received a message from Karen Camp, a New Canaan Public Schools parent, who's played a very active role in our Challenge Parent Partnership for many years. She had organized a large group of parents in support of Jean's candidacy and the application was submitted. We were thrilled to hear that Jean had been selected and on May 16th, she was presented with the award. I wanted to share with you some of the comments shared on Jean's behalf from parents and students. In her 27th year as one of New Canaan's gifted and talented teachers, Jean Caffrey teaches 7th and 8th grade Challenge Social Studies at Saks Middle School. She takes students who are accustomed to getting things right and think they know it all already and teaches them to thoroughly investigate a topic, articulate evidence, and debate and discuss situations where there is no single correct answer. Jean fosters students' intellectual progress while simultaneously promoting their growth as young adult learners. And she understands the critical importance of teaching them to listen to each other even though everyone has something they want to say. In their two years with Jean, students learn essential skills that prepare them for honors and advanced placement work in high school and more importantly, mature into capable young men and women who are ready for anything that comes their way. This is from Karen Camp. My sons are two of the many students who benefited from Jean Caffrey's Challenge classes. My college freshman regards Mrs. Caffrey as the best teacher he has had in his 13 years of school. And he is not alone. Jean's students were startled by the high demands of critical thinking assignments in grade seven but rose to the expectations and developed into a cohesive class that worked together. They learned to research and write and dress for success in 8th grade court and they survived the Civil War, forever bonded with their peers in the experience, secure in their footings as they step forward to their next school. Jean Caffrey takes two years with New Canaan gifted students and gives them a priceless experience that enables them to be the most successful learners, thinkers, and people they can be. I couldn't agree more. Just a few more unsolicited comments from parents. My son loved Jean and she truly helped lay the foundation for many of his intellectual curiosities and excellent work habits. She is a rock star wrapped in a teacher wrapped in an inspiration. We love Jean Cathy. Both of our girls had her and consider her one of their all-time favorite and best teachers. My daughter said she should get every award there is. And I was very moved by a letter that I received, a copy of, that was sent from one of Jean's students that I wanted to end with. Mrs. Caffrey, last night my mom sent me an email about your nomination for the CAG Educator of the Year Award. Congratulations. I don't know much about the award, but it's got me thinking about my experiences in Challenge. The main thing that sticks out is presentation skills. I can't tell you how many people, these are college students, who write everything they say on their slides and refuse to make eye contact with anybody watching them. I still honestly think the Africa Project presentation was the pinnacle of my academic I also don't think I fully understand the concept of studying until one of your Civil War tests. Anyways, the email got me thinking about what I gained from Challenge, aside from great memories. Thanks for both the memories and the skills we learned. Please join me in congratulating CAG's Educator of the Year, Jean Caffrey.
of the board for all the amazing work you do on behalf of the gifted and talented in this district. I know that there's a number of us on the board who you've impacted our children and have very fond memories of their time with you, so thank you. Well. Jean, will you come up and shake everyone's hand?
Thank you for sending me.
With your humility benefiting the master teacher.
So can I just add that, you know, my boys still talk about you to this day and that comment about priceless, I mean, you set these kids up for success and, you know, even
I know. Congratulations. So well deserved. So well deserved.
I know, you got a few of these.
Congratulations.
A photo op.
in high school, they're like, wow, like Mrs. Caffrey really set us up for high school because they're so well-prepared and, you know, they just loved your class and everything you've done, thinking out of the box and pushing them and my kids just had the best experience with you. So we thank you for everything you've done.
Thanks, Jean. Okay, moving on to the Model UN presentation with Mr. Phillips.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I've got Katie Lyden, who's one of the three captains from the club this year. She's stepping down as captain as she goes off to college. And Allison Freeman, who runs the middle school program for Model UN. We start in 6th grade and we take them through to 12th grade. So we'll divide up the work. My job is to explain some of the, what's that?
Just on the 5th.
Sorry, 5th grade. Thanks, Mrs. Freeman. 5th grade. Give you a bit of an introduction. Some of you know this story quite well. Really what we do as a club is every year we make slight adjustments, but the overall program is pretty much intact. One of the other things that's important about the club, and I'll get to that in a minute, is that the captains have a lot of say in the direction that the club heads each year. So firstly, we can, okay, so what we are, and I've mentioned this in the past, we'd like to see ourselves as an academic sport. There's the competitive aspect of it, there's the skill development of it, there's the competitive aspect of it, and there's the leadership aspect of it. So quickly, in terms of what we do as a club, we like to promote a non-US-centric worldview. When we go to conferences, we never represent the United States. We represent all sorts of very un-American countries and it's important to get the point of view and the perspective of those countries when we advocate for them. As far as skills are concerned, research, critical thinking, persuasion, and collaboration. And in different committees, the collaboration or the persuasion element may be more significant than the research and others. We have different styles of committees and Katie will talk about that. The conferences that we've been going to are really the conferences where very, very strong students from the United States compete. And then when we go to the Netherlands, we've got kids from all over the world and it's a really great experience for the kids when they meet very strong students from elsewhere. One thing as a club that we've always tried to do is make sure that nobody in the community who's financially disadvantaged doesn't get to go. And so part of our fundraising activities is always to make sure that we can, and in fact, at every conference over the last three years, we've always had one student who's been carried by the club. And finally, it's about leadership. And getting back to the point I made earlier on, the role of the students is to lead the club. The role of the advisors is to advise. And so they really are setting the direction and the course of the club. And we might give a gentle nudge, but it's really their club and they feel that. As far as last year is concerned, it's quite a large club. Eighty-seven active members last year and in fact, last Friday, we had 50 of them down at Fat Cat celebrating the year and looking forward to next year. So one thing, and again, this is thanks to Mrs. Freeman and also club members who are involved in the middle school program. We have a very strong group of freshmen that have been coming through every year. And the nice thing is they hit the ground running and so when they're going off to college conferences, they really do have a good sense of what they're doing and they perform very well. This year was the 10th year of the Sophomore Simulation. For those of you who may not have heard of it, it's every May, the juniors in the club run a conference at the high school and all the sophomores are involved in that. And so they get an opportunity to introduce kids who haven't seen Model UN into that. And it's a sort of a capstone project for the sophomores in the Social Studies Department. The conferences we went to this year, this isn't, I'll give it to you now, Brown and William &amp; Mary were in November, they're fall conferences. Georgetown is our winter conference and Dartmouth and Cornell are our spring conferences. And they've all, this year, we're hoping to continue with that group of conferences because each of the conferences is quite different and they meet the needs of different styles of students. We want to make sure that every kid who's in the club has an opportunity to succeed. So for example, Dartmouth is quite a small conference and we tend to take a younger delegation to Dartmouth. Cornell is a very competitive conference and we tend to take a very experienced team to that. And Georgetown, which has 3,500 delegates, is very, very competitive. This year, we took 10 students to The Hague. This is our sixth year, I think. Mrs. Freeman's done three of those, Ms. Hurn, two of those, Ms. Hurnberg's done three. Katie was one of the seniors at The Hague this year and that's, that's an experience that we hope we can continue with because not just the conference, but really meeting kids from all over the world is the big memory that most of the kids bring back from that conference. In terms of awards, and one point that we do make and is that it's not all about awards, but awards are always nice to have, is that all grade levels won awards at these conferences. And in particular, this year, sophomores in particular did very well. Five of them won best delegate awards in their rooms, which is very encouraging. And probably the most exciting thing for us is that this year, our research was recognized and we won the best research delegation at Dartmouth, which was hard work and very well led by our research director, Juliana Leon. Okay, so Katie's going to talk about what we're actually doing, college conferences and what have you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for letting me speak today about Model UN and the college conferences. So as Mr. Phillips had stated earlier, we attended five college conferences this year, which was Brown and William &amp; Mary in the fall, then we attended Nyman or Georgetown's Model UN conference over February break, and then lastly, we attended Dartmouth and Cornell over our April break in the spring. So primarily, the role of our conferences are to try and see ourselves in different viewpoints, to attend these conferences and to collaborate with other students and other delegates, to try and determine potential real-world solutions that could have solved this issue in a diplomatic way. Personally, I have found that the greatest assets of these conferences have been the fact that it kind of forces you to learn how to public speak, to learn how to put yourself out there, to learn how to collaborate with other people who you might not have a similar opinion with, and to learn to really come to agreements and resolutions and understand that most issues can be solved in the world if everyone can collaborate together and can really try and work together, which I think is a very positive takeaway from these conferences and is something I am going to take with me through college and beyond, especially in the workforce. Additionally, I'd also like to say that it really does strengthen your research skills. I personally found the junior research papers very easy to pass because I'd spent my last two years honing my research skills through Model UN because you are required to do all the skills that you need. You're required to have in-text citations, you're required to do proper research, to know your facts, to be able to properly cite statistics in speeches, all something that is a really vital skill that is tested in our junior research paper. And I know that was personally something I was very thankful to have the club for because it gave me a very strong foundation to go forth into my English and history classes and really do a very good job passing these benchmarks. Lastly, I think it's very important, because Mr. Phillips had touched on this earlier, about the fact that it's a non-US viewpoint. When we go into these conferences, very rarely are we a US country. And it's very interesting to put yourself in the position of a different country, one you may not necessarily agree with, and try to look at issues in different ways. It makes you understand different people's positions in a way that those who may not participate in Model UN might not have a full complex understanding. It allows you to use your critical thinking to really go and understand why certain countries feel certain ways about certain issues, which is definitely a skill you could bring into the workforce and college and beyond, so. Okay, so all of the skills I touched upon previously about college conferences all carry over to Thymon or the Hague International Model UN Conference that our club attends end of January, beginning of February every year. So I had the absolute pleasure and fortune of being a delegate to the Netherlands this year. We represented Qatar and I was personally in the spec pool room, which deals with political decolonization. And our main topic, we talked about a lot, was Assyrian Golan, which is a very interesting topic that obviously it's been in the news a lot, but it was very eye-opening to look at it from a Middle Eastern perspective and to really understand why certain nations feel certain ways about the issues and to really go to a collaborative forum because unlike our college conferences, Thymon actually does not have awards, which I found makes for a really collaborative environment and really an environment that focuses on working together and finding solutions and really just discussing and hammering out the details, which really puts in perspective a lot of the larger world issues. And it was not just an experience I found in my room in discussions with delegates from our school that were in all of the major committees. This was a trend that continued throughout the committees, which is very beneficial. Additionally, we also get the experience to meet people from all over the world. In my room, I was personally sitting next to a girl who was born and raised in Germany and then a girl whose father worked in the air force and he was working with NATO. So she was currently living in Brussels where NATO's headquarters are. So it was really, really eye-opening to get to sit next to two people and just chat with them about things that were happening in the world and they had completely different perspectives than I did. And it was just very revealing to understand that the way I might think, it's kind of colored and it was just a very eye-opening experience. And it was also amazing to get to see all of the historical sites and to really put into perspective, because I took European history this year, all of the things we've been learning about the Netherlands and the Dutch, to actually see them in real life, really helps me to bring in philosophy works and artworks and better understanding of the Dutch political system into my coursework in the classroom, which was something that was really special. So we also have the Sophomore Simulation every year. So I had the pleasure of helping Paige, so like keep the, help the chairs, run the room as a freshman, participate as a delegate my sophomore year. I actually ran a room junior year and then this room as a senior. I was morally in charge of logistics and everything like that, making sure that we had the rooms booked and the briefing packets ready and everything like that. So especially as a delegate, I have heard a lot of feedback from my friends who have personally stated that the Sophomore Simulation really helped them to learn all the skills I had mentioned on that college conferences forced you to learn, but to do it in a shortened format that didn't necessarily overwhelm them, especially those who may not be more history or research inclined. It allowed them to dip their feet in the water, so to say, and to really get a feel of how global issues can kind of impact them in their daily lives. It also really did help their speaking skills because for a lot of people, this was their very first time getting up in front of a crowd and making a speech, which is something that you absolutely need to have, especially if they're considering pursuing the higher level history courses or even pursuing any courses in college because as we all know, public speaking is such a big part of the everyday life of most students at the school. And it was very good for them to have this experience to speak in front of a crowd. And additionally, a lot of them actually find they really enjoy it and they really enjoy Model UN, which is always a plus. We always have kids who walk away every year going, this is kind of cool. And it's just nice to open them to people because I was lucky to heard from friends and to have Mr. Phillips as a teacher freshman year, but even though we have the club fair, not everyone at the school is aware of the club. And it's just a nice way for people to get to introduce themselves to a club that means so much to so many people. And lastly, we have our scrimmages. So every year, we have Model UN scrimmages, which are one-day events with local schools in the area. Traditionally, we've had a really nice relationship with New Fairfield, where we have really helped us hone our skills for competitiveness in a more low-key and laid-back way. It's especially useful for introducing younger kids who aren't really sure public speaking is their thing or if Model UN is their thing. It's a nice, low-sticks way to ease them into the idea of public speaking and critical thinking and research skills without having to give them the commitment for a full three-day conference. And actually, this year, the co-captains, I were very excited to open our partnership with Greenwich. So Greenwich actually debuted their Model UN program, I believe it was last year, and this year, they were interested in attending our scrimmage. So it was really awesome to have, I think we had 20 Greenwich delegates attend the scrimmage we hosted here in September. And it was just very exciting to bring in new people from Alba Fairfield County to try and just really build a working relationship with a lot of Model UN programs in the area. Thank you so much.
Good evening. On, for the Model UN program at Saks, we actually did a winter scrimmage as well, which was a regular, a regular room that was run by our liaison Danielle Clapper, who also brought in quite a few of our juniors and some sophomores to help us with that. So it was a wonderful opening to our students. In addition, we did a spring scrimmage just a couple of weeks ago as a crisis room, which again exposes them to a very different kind of committee. It's more of a fun, fun end of our year. In addition, that was run by our junior boys and a couple of our girls because Danielle is actually doing an internship, so she's not available during the afternoons anymore. But the boys and some of the other junior girls took over and really ran a great room, actually, and we had a sophomore there as well. So we had a great time and they did a wonderful job working with our very young, and fifth and sixth joined us as well for that. So we do have five, six, seven, and eight participating in that. We had about 40 students in my room that day. Oh, it's still me. The other thing about Saks Middle School Model UN, we meet once a week, right, for about 45 minutes to an hour after school. This year, we had 30 different students from 7th and 8th grade and there were 32 in the 5th and 6th grade run by Deb Line. In addition, we attend the International Model UN Conference in New York City at the end of March. This was our fourth year and as Mr. Phillips mentioned, we also do not take the US point of view. Our first country was Iraq. We've also been Pakistan, we were Nepal. So we make sure our kids also do not have that same kind of typical view and they really have to get themselves into that delegation of that country in different rooms. So it's a wonderful experience for them to break a little bit out of the US point of view and it makes a big difference in the way they learn. We took 30 students to the international conference this year from five, six, seven, and eight. There are 1,600 students attending with 15 different countries that are there as well as about, I think we had 25 US states. So the students really get a great exposure to international. And it's a great location because it's right at the Grand Hyatt and, right at Grand Central, so it's very simple to get to and from for our kids.
Thanks, Allison. Thanks, Katie. So as far as next year is concerned, just want to quickly run through what our priorities are. And again, our priorities are pretty much in line with the last few years. One thing that we've found is, like any sport, you need to practice and you need to have good competition, you need to compete regularly. And so we want to make sure that our kids can compete at a number of conferences, not just the one. And we see an enormous amount of growth between students who are competing in a conference during the fall and then back in the winter and the spring. That growth is pretty significant. One of the other things, one thing that we are looking to change for this year, we've always wanted to develop young delegates and nurture future leaders. And one of the examples of that that Katie mentioned was the sophomore simulations where the juniors are responsible for that day and the seniors play a sort of a consulting role. But as far as the structure of the club is concerned, before conferences, we have a series of morning meetings leading up to them. One of the people who's very important to running those morning meetings is the research director. And when you've got 24 kids, you've got to prepare for a conference, that's a big job for one research director. And so what we've decided to do this year is to expand the research director's role and they'll have, this person will have three juniors, so three rising juniors who are responsible for the three different main committee formats. So we'll have a crisis research coordinator, we'll have a regional research coordinator and a general assembly research coordinator. It gives them a chance to also practice their leadership skills fairly early on in the year and, and it gives us a pool of future leaders as well for the club. And we're always looking, you know, where are the next leaders coming from? And we like to identify people fairly early on in the piece. As far as conferences, this year, we went to five conferences, five college conferences. We think five is appropriate for next year as well. The conference that we dropped last year was one of the winter conferences and given that Thymon is happening around the same time, it makes sense to drop that one. We always come out of the gates pretty strong in the fall. We always perform well at Brown. Hopefully, that'll happen again. But, but winter is really the one area where we think we could drop if we want to make sure that we've got a balanced program that meets the needs of both freshmen through to seniors. So Thymon next year, these are the dates, it's between the 26th of January and the 2nd of February. Luckily, up until now, that's always been after midterms and so it's that early second semester period where the teachers are prepared to support us as well. And that's one thing about the club that we're proud of is that we've never really had any negative feedback from our colleagues in the faculty. They support what we do as well. And one of the reasons for that is because the kids do their work for class as well. Doing Model UN is never an excuse not to do your work. Scrimmages, fall and spring, the 11th sophomore simulation, we're looking at the 30th of May, so right at the end of the school year for that. And one final thing is that we can't survive without the support of the boosters. And this year, we had two mothers who coordinated the fundraising activities in the fall and in the spring. That allows us to support kids who are financially disadvantaged, but it also allows us to cover the transport costs, which are pretty substantial. And so we're identifying mothers for next year or parents for next year, I should say parents for next year, to help run that program as well. So that's what we're looking for is approval on those five college conferences, Thymon and the scrimmages and the sophomore simulation as well. Are there any questions? I think that's the, are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. I just wanted to thank both you, Ms. Freeman and Ms. Line, who are here, for all the work that you do with the students. I know the hours involved on your part personally to make this program a success, so thank you for, you know, giving the time to the kids to have this amazing experience. And it's a credit to all of you. I mean, the growth of the program has been amazing. I remember sitting in those meetings where it's standing room only at the high school for kids to get involved, so thank you. And also, Katie, thank you for your wonderful presentation. You know, the public speaking, you did an amazing job and it's a credit to the program and to, you know, your development within it, so thank you. And also, I just couldn't help but note your comment that it helps you to collaborate with others that you don't necessarily have the same viewpoint on. And I am so
And this year, we had two mothers who coordinated the fundraising activities in the fall and in the spring. That allows us to support kids who are financially disadvantaged, but it also allows us to cover the transport costs, which are pretty substantial. And so we're identifying mothers for next year or parents for next year, I should say parents for next year, to help run that program as well. So that's what we're looking for, is approval on those five college conferences, Thymon and the scrimmages and the sophomore simulation as well. Are there any questions? I think that's the, are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. I just wanted to thank both you, Ms. Freeman and Ms. Line, who are here, for all the work that you do with these students. I know the hours involved on your part personally to make this program a success. So thank you for, you know, giving the time to the kids to have this amazing experience. And it's a credit to all of you. I mean, the growth of the program has been amazing. I remember sitting in those meetings where it's standing room only at the high school for kids to get involved. So thank you. And also, Katie, thank you for your wonderful presentation. You know, the public speaking, you did an amazing job, and it's a credit to the program and to, you know, your development within it. So thank you. And also, I just couldn't help but note your comment that it helps you to collaborate with others that you don't necessarily have the same viewpoint on. And I am so impressed with that view, and I think we could all, you know, take a little bit of that to heart in the next few years. So thank you for your wonderful presentation. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Jen?
So reiterating what Deanna just said, you guys do such an amazing job, and I've seen it on hand, and they learn so much and they learn to work together, and it's really cool to see. I also love, in one of your meetings that I was in, you talked a lot about how in previous years, it was, it got very centered on awards. And not that that's a bad thing to get awards, it's great, but it was causing a lot of stress and that now it's more about the learning and the collaboration and the fun. And like, if the awards come, they come, but it's not the pressure, which I think is so good because our kids have so much of that anyway. So, and it enables kids to kind of not be afraid to go and go to one of these conferences and be worried, you know, that they're supported. So, so thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
Okay.
So why don't we, the next item on the agenda is actually the, if I could get, motion to approve the 2018-2019 university-sponsored international conferences for the New Canaan High School Model UN Club. Jen? Second? Brendan? All those in favor?
It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to the introduction of Dave Gussich as the new Saks principal with Dr. Letzzy.
Yes, a familiar face, but I just wanted to give the board a moment to speak to Dave and hear from Dave. As you know, we, Dave joined our district a year ago, almost about a year ago. He started July 1st, 2017, as our assistant principal here at the high school. And he's been working with the graduating class of 2020 specifically as an assistant principal. However, he's really been working along with Bill Egan and the team with the entire school in doing several significant things here. Dave applied and went through the interview process for the Saks Middle School principal. And really, throughout the process, he showed himself to be an utmost professional, committed to kids, schools, families, knowledgeable about schools and school climate and instructional practices. Dave joined us from Westport, where he had a career supervising probably around 30 teachers district-wide. And so he was just, when he joined us, he was looking to get back into the building. And we knew he was good as an assistant principal, but once he got started, we learned just how good he is. So as he went through the interview process, he really shined as somebody who's going to step right into Saks Middle School, start working with the staff, the students, the parents right away, and really be a strong member of our team for everybody. So I wanted to give Dave a moment to address the board and the board a moment to address Dave if they like. But this is the last time the board will see him as our assistant principal of the high school because Dave will be assuming his new position July 1st as Greg Macedo retires and Dave steps in as our new principal over at Saks. Congratulations, Dave.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good evening, Board of Education, and Dr. Letzzy and the rest of the central office staff. This is not something I would typically like to read from, but there are so many people to thank. I want to ensure that I do address everybody that certainly does deserve it. So first, thank you to all of you. Honestly, I am so appreciative of this opportunity. Next, I'd like to thank Bill Egan and the first-class staff that resides here at New Canaan High School, the students and families that have had the good fortune of knowing over the course of this school year, and the terrific staff, my future colleagues. And PTC at Saks have been so welcoming. And last but not least, I certainly would like to thank Mr. Greg Macedo. He's made himself available at any time and has really helped this soon-to-be transition to be a smooth one and a comfortable one. I've enjoyed getting to know him a little better this past month. You could see why he has built such a strong, high-performing, well-regarded legacy at Saks. And these are certainly enormous shoes to fill, and I'm certainly looking forward to stepping into them and moving forward. It'd also be to remiss if I were to not thank my family, who are always understanding and so supportive of the commitments that come along with the honor of serving in a community such as New Canaan. And for each of these, I am certainly grateful. While I've been in the district for, as Brian said, only a year, it feels like much longer. It's a tribute to the people that I've had the great fortune of working with and the community as a whole. It is truly an outstanding community, and I feel fortunate to be in a system that recognizes and supports a well-rounded quality education and that considers the whole child and achieves at the highest level. So once again, thank you for this tremendous opportunity. I am honored and humbled and excited to serve in this capacity as the next principal of Saks Middle School. So thank you.
Thank you, Dave. We're very excited to have you in this role, and I wish, we wish you much success in your new role and look forward to seeing the imprint you make on Saks as its leader. So thank you. Does anyone else have anything? Jen?
So it was very clear to me when we first met that you are very passionate about what you do. You're very joyful, very energized. We have seen you in the hallways throughout the year, and we got to work a little bit closer together with the color run. You're always willing to help, and I think we actually rolled beach balls down the hallways to getting ready the day of. But, so thank you for that, by the way. But you were there, you supported us the whole way, and, you know, the first, one of the things you said to me at the color run is like, "Next year, I can help like make this bigger for Saks." So we're so excited. You know, I actually asked my daughter, I was like, "Have you seen the new principal?" And she's like, "He's very happy, very happy, very friendly." So they're all so excited to have you there. And just one more thing, so I was in the office when the announcement came through that you got this position, and it was a bunch of like, "Oh," like, "People love you." I mean, in that office, they were all like so excited for you but so bummed that you were leaving. So it was very mixed emotions at the, in the high school office. So that's a good sign. It means they're going to miss you. But Saks is so lucky to have you, and we're really excited for you. So, thanks.
Sure. One thing that I heard today, I just thought of this when you mentioned that, I was in the office earlier and Senior Sammy Smith was in there taking care of some business for graduation. And I saw her earlier down at Saks today and said hello to her. And somebody had mentioned something to her, a younger student who was at Saks, and said, "Oh, have you met the new principal? He's right over there." And the student said, "No, I haven't, but I know his twin brother works up at the high school." So I so look forward to working with that group of kids.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave. Moving on to the athletics update with Mr. Jay Egan.
He says the same thing to me. Give me a complex. It's great to be here tonight, and it's great to be able to share a lot of good news as far as athletics is concerned. When I thought about what I wanted to, the type of update I wanted to do this evening, you know, I was thinking about the most important constituents as far as the athletic program is concerned. And obviously, you know, we have the students who are so highly motivated, and we have their parents who are unconditionally supportive, and, you know, so those are two really great pieces to have in place. But I thought what I'd do tonight is tell you a little bit about the third group that makes the program so successful, and that's our coaches. I think this is something that I think I personally have taken for granted, the quality of the people that we have working with our athletes. So my original plan, which I thought was a great plan, was to have these four, four of these folks come with me tonight. All four of them are doing something related to their sport and are not available to come. So, you know, I scrapped that aspect of this, but I still think you're going to be interested in hearing about, these are coaches that have either been with us for a year or have not coached with us yet. And the first person is Kelly Marks. Kelly is our field hockey coach. She's a member of the United States Field Hockey Team. So she, there are 12 members of that team, and she's on the taxi squad, which is, there's 13 through 24. And she spent some time this winter playing in Chile. And when I spoke with her, she was in Eastern Pennsylvania where they have their training camp. And, you know, I asked her, I keep wanting her to reassure me that she's going to be here in September. So that was part of our conversation. But additionally, she was saying, "Yeah, I'm going to be there." And I have a whole folder full of ideas that I've gotten from this guy she's been working with. His name is Craig Parham. Craig is the director of coaching for USA Field Hockey. And today, I got a phone call from one of our, one of our parents, and this only happens, I think, here and other few other places like this, who actually knows Craig Parham and is scheduling a clinic for him to work with our youth coaches in New Canaan on September 30th. So, you know, Kelly is with, was with us in her first year last year. And the one thing that I noticed about how well she had coached the girls was they were in a semifinal game, which was a very close game. And all season, she had created this series of rotation, which she didn't really make the substitutions, the kids substituted themselves in. And it was a close game, it was two to one, and, you know, it was with 10 minutes or so left to play in the game. And she let the rotation go, and it kept going, and so a large group of kids went in. She didn't shorten the bends, and she didn't do any of those things. And, you know, they functioned just the same way they would in a regular season game. They were fortunate to win the game. They lost to Daniel Hand, two to one, in the Class M championship. But, so she had a successful season on the field, but she's a very interesting person, you know, for us, I think, to have on our staff. The next person is Kevin Marino. He's our girls volleyball coach. Kevin's the director of volleyball at Chelsea Pierce, and he's in Florida right now at a tournament. Kevin brought great energy, and really, I think, I have wondered for a number of years why volleyball wouldn't be a more popular sport in New Canaan because it seems like we have the type of students that, you know, would really enjoy the sport. And turns out, you know, Kevin pressed all the right buttons, and they had, they had a great year. They beat Darian for the first time since, I think, like 2004. They made the FCAC playoffs, they made the state playoffs. But Kevin also brought a few things to the program that, you know, is really super to see. And I think Dave was there when they had this dig pink activity, is where it's, they coordinate fundraising for breast cancer with the game. So your team comes in pink. But what he did, which I thought was so interesting, is the girls all read who they were pledging for before the game. You know, so he wove this into the fabric of the team and made it a much more rich experience. So Kevin's had a really successful first year, and I'm excited to see, you know, what he's going to do with that program going forward. Clark Jones is our new hockey coach. Clark is also the director of coaching at the Winter Club. He's really well, he knows all the New Canaan hockey players, you know, since they were, since they started playing, which Jill knows is when they're, what, three or four years old that start getting coached. Clark also coached the midget team, which in my understanding is kids that are under 14. They went to the national championship, and most of those kids are New Canaan kids. He played hockey at Union College, which is a pretty high level of hockey. He brought another really qualified assistant coach with him. And so I think that program is really, having Clark there, I think he's a leader of men. And that's the feedback that I've gotten from the players so far this year. He has high standards, but he's very well-liked and a great leader. And then Luke Green, who hasn't coached yet for us, but Luke is really well-known to people in New Canaan. He's the director of coaching for the Soccer Association. And one thing that we were hoping to get, actually the theme with all of these coaches is they're also working with and have exposure to the youth in New Canaan. So we think that that's a really good model. We've had some, a lot of success with that in some of our other programs. So we think that that model will be very successful. So what Luke has already done, has already coordinated, has already had a meeting with the incoming eighth graders, they've already standardized, you know, what they're going to wear to practice, the boys and girls. And so the making that transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, I think, is going to be very seamless. And, you know, he's very skilled, he has great interpersonal skills, very well-organized, and he manages all of the coaches. So we have, it's called New Canaan Football Club, so they have a contract with UK Elite for the coaches that work with all the youth. And a number of those coaches are going to be also working as assistants for the high Kristen Woods is our girls soccer coach. Kristen couldn't be here tonight because she was receiving another Coach of the Year honor. She was already honored by the Connecticut High School Coaches Association as the-
You said soccer, Jay.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I don't mean soccer. I meant lacrosse. So she's already been honored as the lacrosse, girls lacrosse Coach of the Year, and she's being honored by CIAC again tonight as the girls lacrosse Coach of the Year. And one of our players, I can't say this yet because it's going to happen in like 45 minutes, but one of our players is going to get a really huge honor as far as lacrosse in the state of Connecticut is concerned tonight. So we'll be more about that tomorrow. I thought it might be interesting to just look at the breakdown of coaches with respect to those that are teachers or those who that work for, work for the Board of Education and people that are coming in, you know, from the outside that are not affiliated in any way with the school district. So I know this number is accurate because I got it from Tracy, so there's 106 coaching positions. I wish it was my own number, I wouldn't be so confident, but I'm confident.
For those in the audience, that's somebody in our finance department.
Yeah. So I'm confident that it's an accurate number. And so the coaches that we have on our staff, there are 29 unique coaches, so some of them coach multiple sports that are employed by Board of Education. And so that's, that's a percentage of 36 of our total 106 that are employed by the Board of Education. But when I looked at that number a little more closely, there are only 21 teachers. So there are 21 teachers. So that means 20% of, almost 20% of the coaches are teachers. Now, that's a, 15 years ago, that was a much different model. You know, the teacher-coach was a very common model. You know, that's not as common of a model right now, which means that, you know, there are a lot of different things that we have to think about with respect to hiring coaches, retaining coaches, and so forth. So there's two routes to certification. And one route is for a certified teacher who merely has to apply for certification, just like they would apply for any other endorsement that they're qualified for from the State Department of Education. But if they're not teachers, if they don't have, they don't have teaching certification, they can apply for one-year temporary coaching certification. And after that one year, they have to take a 45-hour course in order to be able to apply for standard certification. So in addition to that, that course that they have to take, they also have to take CPR and first aid, and they also have to take concussion management. So for one of those folks, it costs $465 for them to get the credentials that they need for certification. Now, if they happen to be from the UK, which six of those assistant soccer coaches are, they have to pay an additional $200 to have someone in the United States read their, read their transcripts and translate the credits from the UK to credits from the United States. So one of those guys or girls, they would have to pay $665 to get paid $4,000 to coach. So that's, there's a lot of, that's getting to be, or has been for a while and continues to be a challenging landscape as far as assistant coaches are concerned particularly. And assistant coaches, there's a high turnover rate there, not so much, the head coaches aren't really, it's not so much, but assistant coaches, a year or two. And, you know, we're always, we're always looking in certain sports, you know, to fill those positions. So I just wanted to, while I'm here, just to sensitize you to, you know, what some of those challenges are for the district. So our participation rate this year is still at 70%. I think it was 72% last year. So we always want to look at unique athletes, and so that's one athlete that's participating. They may participate in multiple sports. So we look at that number with our, with our enrollment. And, you know, this year, students at New Canaan High School are participating in athletics at a rate of 70%, 70% of the student population. I thought you were all going to like this. This, I got some mixed reviews on this one here, but I thought this was a good, some good information to share. Some of my colleagues, central office colleagues, didn't think it was so pertinent, but I happened to like it. So the background that I gave you privately, I'll give you publicly now that the FCAC, the FCAC began in 1961. the FCAC began in 1961. And so the statistics begin in 1961 and I think that it will be interesting to know that in the history of the, of the FCAC, of our, of our league, that we are the winningest program of 17, there used to be 18 schools, now there's 17 schools in the league. So I think what makes that even more interesting is, at this point, there's 17-member schools, there's two private schools who are, have a smaller enrollment than New Canaan High School, then New Canaan High School has the smallest public school enrollment, followed by Wilton, which is close, about 22 or 23 students, followed by Darian, which is about 35 students larger, followed by Ward, which is about 200 students larger. So, you know, we do, we do a lot, the athletes do a lot, many of our athletes participate in multiple sports and they're very committed to what they do. And as is the community, committed to athletics. I mean, I grew up in the area and Canaan has a rich history, you know, obviously since 1961, probably further back, of interest and commitment to athletics, as they do to academics, to the arts, to excellence, basically. So, you know, I always think of myself as a custodian of that, of that interest. So this year, the two, we, we won three, three championships, actually. One was recently, last week, actually, we won the Class L Girls, Girls Lacrosse Championship. We beat Darian in the semis, nine to eight. That was Darian's first loss to a school in Connecticut since 2012, when we beat them in the quarterfinals of the state. I think they had had 73 wins in the state of Connecticut. So then we went out and beat Ridgefield in the finals, but that game that we played against Darian, there were three officials on the game, two of the officials sent me an email, which has never happened before, and basically said that what a privilege it was for them to officiate the game. And it was a game that you couldn't take your eyes off. I mean, by, as far as both teams were concerned, it was a very high-level, very competitive game that I know everybody that saw it was just proud to be associated with it. And our girls golf team won the FCAC. Let me say just one more point about the Class L championship. So in, in lacrosse, there's Class L, Class M and Class S. So to win the Class L championship, it's these, it's the best teams in Connecticut, basically, that you're playing. The largest teams are basically the best teams as far as that sport is concerned. So, you know, that's really like a true state championship, as is girls golf. Girls golf has only one competition. And so, girls won the FCAC championship, they beat Ward, and then they had, they played Ward in the state championship and they, they tied after 18 holes. Like how do, can you tie with all those people playing? So if you play golf, you know, it's hard enough in a normal situation to hit a golf ball. So now they have to go play five-hole, a five-hole playoff, which we won 56-55. You know, so, I mean, these are like, if you play golf, you really can appreciate the pressure that must have been on, those girls must have been under, but they performed really well. And I have to credit Priscilla Schultz, she's a calming influence, she's a veteran teacher here and she has got a really nice way with the girls and I think, you know, that has a lot to do with, you know, that and obviously the girls did it themselves, but the combination of things, I think, were very important there. So obviously I didn't have a gene for, for gifted and talented, because I got a lot of stuff on this slide. By the way, so did Molly UN, I don't want to say it. She said, they said like, "Don't put too much on the slides." I was saying, "My slides got crowded, but they weren't that crowded." I was crowded.
Their font was bigger, Jay.
Yeah. So, so anyways, I think all of this is sort of, you know, just kind of highlights of the rest of the year. As mentioned before, field hockey was runner-up, New Canaan Swim and Dive, they're both third place in the state. Girls ice hockey was FCAC runner-up. Wrestling had a great year this year, they were third place in the FCAC championship, they had three champions and two runners-up. There's two young wrestlers that are really accomplished and that have kind of really pulled up, elevated that program. Boys golf was third in FCAC, boys lacrosse was runner-up to Darian, also got beat by them in the semis in a real good game. And Coach Marinelli was honored with a Gold Key Award by the Connecticut Sports Writers Alliance. It was a, I always happened to be at that banquet, it was a very nice affair and a well-deserved honor for him. Few things I'm looking forward to next year that I'd just like to mention, I'd like to implement, we are going to implement an online coaching evaluation system. It's similar to TalentEd as far as the format is concerned, coaches will be able, will have password, they will be able to, to log in, you know, I'll be able to enter data there. And some of the things that are going to be a little bit new, as far as that's concerned, is the self-assessment, I, that's one of your handouts, is the coach's self-assessment. I'm interested in having this as a tool to stimulate coaches reflecting on their practice. And also, right now, we don't do a very good job with our assistant coaches and so part of the head coach's responsibility would be to make sure that he has this exercise, does this exercise with the assistant coaches. So there'll be feedback, everybody will be getting feedback as far as their, their practice is concerned. And this will be something that we will have online. Something else that I'm going to include there is, you know, if I'm at a game or if I'm at a practice and you see a lot of positive things going on, you know, you try to make a point of mentioning that to the coach, you know, "I saw this, this was great." But sometimes you're not always able to do that. And this online system will have a way for me to use this walkthrough checklist, which is on the back, to give feedback about things that I see at practice or in a game that then can be part of my, my con, my end-of-the-year conference with, with the coaches as well. So I hope that I can explain this to everybody and I have some pictures here for Jill and Darlene, because this is what they like. They like the visual aids, so. So I'm going to try to, this is now, this is completely, and this is way past turf, okay? This is way past turf that I've explained to you in the past. This is, so this is a system that is going to allow us to set up online streaming in Dunning Stadium and in the high school gym for any contest that's going to be happening there. And it's fully automated, there's no, there's no camera operator there. So there are four cameras, then with the computer stitches together the action so that when you look at it, it looks seamless as far as the kids running up and down the court. Last year, I think Roman and the TV crew did about 50 or 55 or 60 games that they put on NCTV and were available other places. We feel like we can stream 200 events here by simply creating a menu. You simply create a menu, the company that we're working with is National Federation of High School Sports, it's their school broadcast group. And we just make a menu out of when the games are going to be and those games will be live-streamed. Now, they'll be live-streamed with no sound, it'll just be action. Or the TV broadcasting kids can, can over, sound over the Pix, the National Federation of High School Sports broadcasting. Now, this does have a paywall, so there'll be some, there's going to be a user charge at the end of this, which will, we don't exactly know that number yet, but they're minimal charges. I think it was $25 a season or $50. It's not, it's not a lot, but there is a, because what, what we'll get from this is we'll get a website and we can put other content on that website. You can put graduation on that website. Right now, we're using YouTube to host all those streaming events, so we will be able to use this website to host all of this. Now, I know Fairfield Ludlow is doing this, I know Greenwich is going to do it, I know Shelton's doing it right now, a lot of places around the country are doing it. I think we're sort of ahead on this, not ahead, but towards the front as far as getting this technology going. The Booster Club is going to fund all of the equipment, so it's $6,500 or so. They're going to fund all the equipment and we've, it's already in the works. So the cameras will be installed in those two facilities and there'll be a menu that'll be created. And so if you want to watch JV volleyball and you're still at work, you can watch JV volleyball and, you know, this will be-
Or maybe when you get home.
What? What's that?
When you're off the clock.
So I think it's, it's something that, I think it's an expectation that our parents can have, that this is a service that we can provide for them. And I think, you know, we've gotten, people are really excited about, you know, thinking about being able to do this and, you know, something that we're also excited about bringing, bringing forward to, to our parents. And the last, the last initiative that I have, well, that's just what it would look like. This is what's with championship game that we were in a couple of years ago, but that was just a snippet of the broadcast. So when I spoke earlier about the different types of certification and the different types of coaches we have, who are teachers, who's not teachers, who has temporary certification, who needs permanent certification, who needs CPR and first aid, when do they need it? You know, how, how can all of this be, how can we keep all of this straight? And I think this is a new feature that CIAC has put on their website, which will allow us to share this, allow New Canaan to share this database amongst HR and the athletic office. So we will all have, we will all have common information about the status of all of our coaches. So this is Coach Brown and it's got all his information, his five-year cert, certification, when that expires, when his CPR expires, and so everything here, including the CEUs. Coaches still need to take CEUs and they need to have 15 CEUs over a five-year period when they re, their certifications are in a five-year cycle. So when they need to be recertified, they need 15 credits. So it also allows us to track that in this, in this database. So we'll, we'll all be looking at, you know, the same information going forward. What's done, Bill, hang in there. Just the last, the last thing I'd like to share tonight is an athletics facilities update. I want you just, if we haven't talked about it yet, in the last two years, the Booster Club has donated about $70,000 worth of equipment to the fitness center. The flooring outside of the fitness center was something that we did last summer. Throughout the year this year, they've been buying more functional training equipment, we bought, we're buying some cardio equipment, we've bought some other strength and conditioning equipment, equipment. And, you know, so that facility, I mean, that's a facility that you probably wouldn't see at a lot of colleges. And I mean, I'm saying that with pride, but it's accurate and it's not just, I'm not just saying that, people walk down and see that facility. So the one thing that I'm working on this summer is I'm working with Performance Athletics, which is an outside, a, a group that we actually contract with to give us additional athletic training support, to look at the content of that program and make some suggestions as to the exercises and to what, you know, what, what way we can best instruct young people that are involved using that, using that facility. The Fields Project, when we leave tonight, well, when I leave, it won't be dark, maybe when you leave it will be, but I think the lights are going to be on the new field. I know the generator was in last week and I know that it was lit up one time, I'm assuming, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's going to be lit up tonight, so take a look, it's spectacular. This summer, after grad, starting next week, there's going to be what's called a wear coat that's going to go on the track. This is more important information, Darlene. It's, so anyway, the track and all that area is going to end up red, it's going to be coated with a, with a red surface, that's good, that goes, that's the subsurface that you're looking at now. So that's going to start on about the 25th, that's about a two and a half or three-week project. There's also going to be a storage shed built in the, it will be the southwest corner, the far corner of the track, that's already been contracted for and I know that's scheduled to begin right after the 4th of July. And other than that, that project is pretty much complete. You know, we've gotten, the feedback that we've got from people that have been here is that's a fantastic complex and it's just exactly what we hoped that would, that it would be. Giving all, anyone in Canaan that's interested in field sports, an opportunity to have access, no matter what the weather. And lastly, I'm excited that we're going to redo the gym floor. We're looking at the lines right now, so that's, we think we have it straightened out. But we looked back and we, we thought we, I asked a couple of people that have been here the same amount of time that I have, I don't really remember when the last time the floor was done, but I know that it's been 20 years. You know, so it's going to be, it's going to be great, it'll be a huge lift for that facility. And we're also hoping to be able to put in new scoreboards so that we have, you know, a big lift coming from that facility and everybody is much appreciated for all your support. So, how's that, good? All right, well, that's all I have, so any, have you, have any questions or?
All right, thank you, Jay. I'll open it up to the board for questions first and anyone question? Jen?
So first off, I just want to thank you for all your work that you do for our schools. You, it's amazing how many things that you juggle in a day, let alone like a week, and I know you have so many tough decisions to make a lot of times. One thing that you said to me that I was, that is always so impressive is, you know, dealing with issues, you're like, "My number one priority is the kids, the athletes, that's my priority and my coaches." So it's, you know, I know it's a really hard job, so thank you. So I'm totally psyched about all your initiatives, they're all really exciting, especially the streaming. Wondering if soccer, like Connor Field, I know that the Soccer Association is super interested in having some of that streamed. And then also, I think it's such a great idea to have sports broadcasters or something like that, being able to, you know, like, I was driving home from a game and I was listening to the, the boys lacrosse game and it was so great to hear, because I was driving, I couldn't watch, but, so, but I was wondering about soccer, because I know they're asking about that.
So at this point, half of their games are in the stadium.
Right.
And so I think that, that'll, that'll-
That's good.
I think that, that'll, that'll do, that'll do, I'm not, I'm not sure how we would do it at Connor, because you'd have to build some kind of a stand, a stand there, but, so that's why we have, we have half their games scheduled in Connor. And one thing that I'm, I'm almost finished with, which I'm excited for as far as soccer, on October 5th, it's a Saturday afternoon night, we're going to move our football game to, it's a Friday, we're going to move our football game to the Saturday and we're going to play a boys and girls soccer doubleheader, Friday, late Friday afternoon and Friday night. And we'll have to let the boys and the girls flip for the, for the late game, so I don't know who's going to make that decision, but we'll flip a coin, I think. But, you know, that's something that I, I hope, you know, we can do those things for that community, because Luke and Rich, I know, are really, they believe that they can, they can put, they can provide the type of program that the community is looking for and that they deserve. So, you know, they're working hard at it. And so we're going to try to support them in that way, but as far as having all of those games streamed, I, I don't know.
Right.
I have to wait, I think we have to wait, I think we have to see one year to see exactly what that would entail. Maybe the answer to that, well, I don't know, have to wait and see.
Well, even just some of them, I think that-
Yeah, well, all the ones in the stadium will be.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great. And then my other question, so I know we had an issue this year with a coach, like, has there been any talk about like additional screening or any change in procedure or anything to that effect?
So, so Bill and Gary and I had a meeting after that happened and taking what Brian had asked us to do and asked us to look at, you know, we came up with a few things that we're going to do, which is basically what Brian had asked us to do, you know, after that happened. And the changes would be that there is a personal reference check for everybody that we hire that has, is done independently outside of my office. So it's either done by somebody in the central office or it's done by somebody in the main office, another person, so there's another person involved as far as that, a check there would be concerned. We will do the social media background check, which we weren't doing in the past. And the issue of being certif, having cert, coaches out coaching that are not certif- And the issue of being certif, having cert, coaches out coaching that are not certified, the complication to that is the wait time is about eight weeks from the time when you apply to when you're actually going to get your certification, depending on what time of the year. I think Gary probably knows better than I do, but certain, like if, think you were trying to do it now, it could be longer than that. So what we, what we decided was that once a coach had all of the necessary information for certification, and that was in the possession of human resources, that there would be some kind of, you know, pre-certification okay given to me, saying that that coach could, could coach. And until I get that, that nobody can go on the field. You know, we had spring football practice and we took a couple of coaches off the field that didn't have, that didn't have their credentials. And so I think, I think everyone understands the importance of that. So I don't think it's, we didn't get much resistance from that. It's just, you know, it's just a change in protocol.
Great. Well, thank you.
Okay.
And just to clarify, so, because I think you said it, but I just want to make sure everybody's clear. So you have a checklist from the state that these coaches have to, you know, information that they have to provide and certifications that they have to have. And so as a, as a district, we will internally make sure that each of those items is checked. Oftentimes, because it's a, you know, a state agency, they can have wait time just for paperwork. And, and by having all those boxes checked, we can assure that they would have been certified. It's just, we're waiting for the state's paperwork to come through.
Because if we don't do that-
Right.
You know, then in August, when, I know you were agreeing, but I'm just saying the reason that it's, it's something that we have to think about how to do is either that or we wouldn't be able to staff, you know, because people just don't, you know, because there's so much turnover with assistant coaches, they, they don't come back. Sometimes they, you don't know they're not coming back. Sometimes you do, sometimes you don't. And so there's a little, I think one thing, one other thing that will help that is the Booster Club pays for CPR, first aid certification three times a year for the coaches. So that's $90 that they don't have to pay. We're offering that next week for the fall. And we're going to offer that in October for the winter. And we're going to offer that in January for the spring. Now, if they don't take advantage of those, then they can pay to do it online or, and get it done. So that's, you know, and if they don't have it, they can't coach. So we have to shift some of the response, I think a lot of this has to do with shifting responsibility to people that aren't really used to the aspect of, aspects of certification and credentialing that teachers are and people in education are. You know, you get, you know, I showed you the, the most sophisticated group of coaches that we have with respect to professional professionalism. There are others that, you know, don't have the same experience that they do that, you know, just don't, this is new to them. But I'm, I'm sort of glad that we're talking about it, because I think for, for New Canaan and for other school districts like New Canaan, this is going to be an ongoing challenge for you all going forward, you know, to be able to, you have 106 coaches. And I think one of the things that's happened with the teachers, some of them I think would like to get involved, but I think the, the aspect of commuting, you know, with the compensation, and you have to really then, you know, balance your love of the sport with those downsides and your family and all of those things. So, you know, we have coaches that do it for a couple of years and they don't do it anymore. Situations in our life change. It's, it's a challenge. It's a challenge.
Yeah, and so just to share one or more, two things, one or two more things on this. I believe that after the paperwork is processed, like you say, it may take eight weeks, it may take however long, the certification is backdated to the date of receipt of the paperwork, right? So that we're really doing that pre-check to say it's the eligibility for that certification. So we, we're confident that they will be. And also, I've been talking to other superintendents and folks around the state, and this is a problem statewide. The bottleneck, the turnover in coaches everywhere, the bottleneck of the paperwork, the availability of the courses that people need to take. And then even, like you say, the, the money, right? And we were talking about folks who might be working for 25 cents an hour to work with our kids, because they just love the sport, they love the kids, they love what they're doing. And then we're asking them to pay all this money upfront and so trying to partner with that. So I think Connecticut has some improvement in this area as a state in this certification. And we're going to keep working to try to, try to help them to do that, because it is so important. So I think that this approach at least, so it doesn't shortchange our students or our programs, but does make sure that everyone on the field is eligible or certified. And they will be once those certifications are backdated. I do also just want to share my brief experience with the streaming content system. So I was teaching overseas. I was in Jordan and my niece was a basketball player up in Colchester, Connecticut. And they were playing in the state championships against New Fairfield. And my niece is a very good basketball player. She's gone on to play in college. And so this is just last year. So I, I didn't have any way that's, that I could tell to go to actually watch the game. So I went right into this site, logged in, signed up, paid my $25, whatever it was. And with only a seven-second delay or so, I could watch the entire basketball game from the Middle East. And I was able to see it, text with my brother and have those conversations with folks who were there. And the, the quality was excellent. The comment, the commentators didn't get my last name right, but they were pretty good otherwise. And, but it was really a great system. And as a matter of fact, afterwards, you could contact them and for $10 buy a DVD of the game. I did that, even though they lost, and she hasn't watched it yet, but, but I have it for her when she's ready. But it really, it's an amazing system and it's, it's out there, it streams very smoothly. And it was amazing to be able to pull it up and watch it, seven hours ahead over there in the Middle East. It was great.
Awesome.
I think on our, on this, on the website that we'll have, after 70, in fact, I know this, after 72 hours, it's, the content's free as well. So, you know.
So I didn't have to pay for that DVD?
Other questions? Anyone have other questions?
I just have a couple. So the fees that the, so the certifications that the coaches have to get, it's for the non-teacher certified coaches or all coaches?
So all coaches need to have current CPR and first aid, and the Booster Club will give that three times a year.
But the 460, like the 665 or the 465?
So let me just say something about that class. So Brian reminded me, so I'm talking to Kelly, our field hockey coach, the national team player. She's not going to be in the country when the course is offered this summer. She has to take the course. So the only option, other option she has is to pay for the course and take it in next winter. Then she can get a second temporary certification, so she'd be able to coach. But that's the bind that a lot of people find themselves in. There's no online aspect of that course. It's two full weekends, 45 hours, two full weekends and two other days. So, you know, it's, so they, what we have done with that, what the Booster Club has also done is upon successful completion of that course, we reimburse them 50% of that cost. So.
So when they get their certification, I know CPRA is only good for a year, but the other credentialing, any other, the 45-hour course, is that-
It's good forever.
That's good forever. So they do it once and then, so it would be incurred, and if they change districts, do they have to?
It's like a teaching, it's like a teaching endorsement. Yes, yes.
So once they've taken it, if a coach does it here or anywhere else, it follows them in perpetuity as long as it's the same, same sport? Or does it matter? They just had a coaching certification?
It doesn't matter as long as they get, the only thing they have to do to maintain that certification is to have the 15 CEUs when they reapply at the end of five years.
Okay.
So a lot of that, a lot of that we can offer. So much for those lights. A lot of that we can, we can offer here and some of it, they just have to, it's offered, does not, it's a very closed system as far as how they can get what they need for certification, which is, that makes a bad situation, you know, a little more complicated.
So I don't know if this is, if you have this with you, but so it's the 665 for one year of certification? Because that's their, that's their 45-hour course included in that, the 465. And then how much, so it's like 100, you said, for the CPR? How much is it?
It's 90.
90. So each year, really, they have a $90 re-upping for, so I don't, have you worked with any of the other ADs across the state to sort of approach the licensing group to talk about this issue?
We have. There's a lot, there's a lot of, there's a lot of talk about it. And everyone's in the same place as we are as athletic directors, because we're, we're in the compliance, we're between a rock and a hard place as far as the compliance is concerned, because the compliances are coming down from the legislature, everything that they want to put in that we need to comply with. And then if it doesn't happen, I mean, it stops at the, it's the athletic director that's right, right in the middle of it. So everyone feels very uneasy about, you know, the responsibilities that we have with respect. Well, I'll just give you an example. One of the young men that I had to take off the field this spring had been coaching for three years at another high school, another public high school in FSAC, never was certified. Had no, no paper, no, nothing, nothing, no, no, he said he had it, he had the coaching course, he didn't have the certification, never had it. So I think it's a widespread problem, you know, but I think we can solve the problem within, even within the structure that we have. The 45-hour course, you know, there's some pressure to put that online. You're going to put a, so what they do with CPR and first aid now is they, you can, you can take most of it online and you take 50 minutes of practical, of your skills, the skills piece. So you could probably do the same thing with this course, you know, take the content piece. And then if there's discussion piece or case studies or something, do that and make it reasonable for people to do. It was two and a half weekends. She's, she's going to be in Estonia or something when this class is going on. I don't know, you know.
Okay, different, different topic. The coaching evaluation. Are you the only one who evaluates the coaches? And, you know, how are you able to sort of evaluate all those, all those coaches?
I evaluate the head coaches.
Okay.
So I evaluate all the head coaches. And we're, we are, we're mandated to do that.
Okay.
So within 90 days at the end of the season, we have, it doesn't mandate what kind of instrument you use, but there has to be an evaluate, there has to be a coaching evaluation done. So, you know, I, my evaluations, the one that we have been using up to this point is a checklist of competencies, basic coaching competencies that the state of Connecticut has identified. And then there's a narrative piece and then there's a goal-setting piece. So we have the narrative and then we have the goals that we'd like to work on together going through the next year. That's the way we've evaluated our coaches. But I, I think it's too, it's really one-sided to me, you know. And that's why I think that the self-evaluation piece will really stimulate more meaningful reflection and improvement as far as the coach is concerned, if we can just get the right, you know, aspects for discussion. So that's, I'm looking forward to doing something. I don't, I don't really feel like the instrument that we're using right now, it's, it's covering us compliance-wise, but I don't think it's really stimulating the growth, you know, when you meet with them, so.
And then just finally, I guess it's more of a comment and it may just be, you know, it's, you know, I think it's, it's sad to see the, the teacher-coach model sort of going away. I think there's so many, you know, sort of positive things that come from teacher-coaches. And so I don't know, you know, maybe it's just, you know, it's the new generation and we can't really do much about it. But have we looked at possible ways to encourage more teacher-coaches or, you know, I just think there's, absent the, the credentialing part of it, I think that there's just so much training that educators get that a 45-hour course is never going to touch upon with dealing with kids.
Yeah, every, every day of the week, if you have, if I had an opportunity to hire a certified teacher or somebody who was a content expert, you would hire the certified teacher 100% of the time. Content is something that they can acquire, you know, the ability to understand teaching and learning is something that they're trained to do, right? So that's obviously the ideal circumstance. Well, I have reached out to them with all the openings. I've reached out to them with our entire staff many times throughout the summer and, you know, making it clear to them that it's just what I said to you, that we always rather hire teachers. And I think they would like to do it and sometimes they come and talk about it. And then, you know, they kind of think it, it's a practical problem for them. I mean, transportation in Fairfield County is a problem for everybody that lives here. And, you know, that's, I'm not saying that we're defeated by it. I mean, and I will say this, that as we hire new teachers, you know, Gary is, is, everyone that, every person that he hires that's indicated that they have athletics in their background, he always calls me or sends me an email and we always contact them and talk to them. So we're doing, you know, we're trying to do those things. You know, Steve Adard told me about someone at the middle school who's a track person that might be interested in getting involved next year. And so that's great, you know, we just continue to do those things. But I think in general, it's just, you know, I just wanted to voice that as a concern that I have for, you know, going forward with it. It's a high standards for coaching, coaches in this community, you know, so.
And then I just wanted to also say, thank you for this PEXA lot or whatever you call it.
PEXA lot, yeah.
Excellent. Just having athletes in sports where we were paying for outside videography services, I think you're going to save the families of the athletes a lot of money, because that all goes into their dues. And so I think it's great if we can, and it's a more consistent, you know, approach to how we, you know.
One of the questions that we asked them about that, we wanted to assure that it was still our content. So it's still our content to do with what we want to do. So coaches can use it as teaching tools, parents can use it as for highlight information tapes. So it's not, we're not, we didn't, the content is not being, it's just a paywall to view it based on the hosting site. So it's not, we're not relinquishing our, our content.
Can the content go right into Huddle as well? Nice.
That's a good, that's a high-level question.
Can't help it. I'm curious. That's great. That's a great system.
Any other question?
Okay. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you.
Moving on to district goals and, and-
Nope.
Oh, no, sorry, statement of accounts. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Statement of accounts.
We can stick, skip over if you'd like. So you have before you the May statement of accounts for this current fiscal year. 11 months under our belt, we've spent 82.6% of the budget. We have encumbered 14.6%, and the bulk of that is for payrolls and balloon payment at the end of June. And so that leaves us with 2.8% of our budget to spend. At the first meeting in September, we're going to issue the unaudited final financial statement for the year. And at that time, we're going to provide the board with the final transfer. We don't have any transfers on the board right now, but we did talk in Ed Resources the other day. And our plan is to look at accounts that are variable in nature and we've been monitoring them. And we do expect to have funds available in several of the salary accounts, primarily the hourly accounts, in the substitute accounts, the retirement supplement, and some contracted services accounts. And with that, we do have to cover some additional unanticipated repairs that came up. And this year, we had a rough start to the year with the air conditioning. The high school, Saks and West all had issues that we've had to take care of that costs hundred, tens of thousands of dollars. In addition to that, we do have a lighting problem in the auditorium here. The lighting board is gone, so we, that's a 15 to $20,000 expenditure. So those are the types of items that we're going to address first. And then from there, we're going to look to do an upgrade for our website software, possibly purchase some of the printer devices that we're going to be leased next year. And then look at the maintenance projects that were deferred. So that's our plan right now. And if there's any questions?
I'd be happy to answer. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Joanne. All right. Now we can move on to the first read of our district goals and objectives.
Sure, I'll just say word and then we'll hand this over. So as you know, the district goals and objectives are really our guiding documents for the work that we do throughout the course of the year. And we, we work each spring to update them in order to move some of our initiatives forward, if appropriate, to continue some that have been underway and to sometimes bring in some new ones. And you'll see all three of those this year in the revisions that are in front of you. As you know, we have our five large goals, five overarching goals that begins with teaching and learning, ends with stewardship. We have our communications, our teaching and learning, and our school climate goals. Those, each of those big goals are followed by specific indicators that are really, that's how we make them actionable, right? Those are the steps we'll take to progress towards the goals that exist. In the document in front of you, you'll see that the new language, new verbiage in the goals is read. We've put a strike through, through the existing goals where appropriate. And some of them continue forward, because they're things that are on a continuum that we continue to work on and improve as a function of continuous practice. to work on and improve as a function of continuous practice, and continuous improvement. The, this draft has been, it's been reviewed by the administrators and the cabinet folks, but it also really comes from our practitioners down at the classroom level in that our, our curriculum leadership council, our administrative leadership, others have really looked deeply at our existing goals, given us feedback as well about how to continue to progress forward. So what I thought we'd do is just hit on some of the changes that we're looking at for next year, give the board an opportunity to review it between now and one, an upcoming meeting, and then we could certainly have more discussion at that point as we look for the, the vote to approve as a second read. By doing it a little bit early this year, typically we do it always in the summer, by doing it a little bit early, this gives us more flexibility as far as the conversation and the, the final approval date. It's always our goal to have these in place prior to the start of the new year, because they are so important and do guide so much of our practice and what have you, and inform us, keep, really keeps things aligned across the district in our efforts so that we keep moving forward in thoughtful and systemic ways. Dr. Crenti, would you like to take us through goal one?
Sure. So what I'll do is I'll really go through the highlights. I think at the last Board of Education meeting, I had an opportunity to give you a progress toward all of the goals and the objectives, and it's probably easier to hit where the changes will be. So certainly, as Dr. Lutzi said, our overarching goal, number one, will remain the same, increase student learning as measured by multiple and varied assessments to assure all students graduate prepared for a dynamic and complex global society. You'll see that the objectives are remaining the same. This is part of the core work that we do with our district curriculum leadership council, it's part of the work that we do with all the teachers in regards to instruction and performance assessments, where you'll see the change, which I spoke about last week, is really trying to calibrate those scoring for assessments that are really gonna take us through that K-12 perspective, and really have an opportunity to look at, what does writing look at as a kindergartner versus a fourth grader versus an eighth grader versus someone in high school, and really start to make sure that our curriculum is aligned as well as our instruction and our assessments. So this will be the first area that we'll kind of pilot this method with, and then we'll see what other areas we'd wanna move into. When you look at objective number two, all students will meet NCHS graduation standards, which include the knowledge and skills needed to succeed in a complex global society. So as you recall, we already gave a presentation to the board in regards to what the credit requirements are, and we did speak about how we would like to create a committee of variety stakeholders who will research and begin to develop the vision of the graduate. So that would be the next level of work that we would do. As you turn the page over, certainly as we're looking at that vision of the graduate and continuing to assess all of our curriculum and instruction, we're always examining scheduling and looking at the student opportunities and what those learning outcomes are, always researching what the best practices for scheduling is. Certainly, you'll see in objective number C, number C, letter C, that, you know, we were doing the research and reporting on the best practices related to school start times, and now you'll see that written out, and I'll read that as is, create a committee of stakeholders and initiate a process to develop recommendations about school start times and related implications for the Board of Education to consider in advance a final development of the superintendent's recommended two thousand nineteen, twenty budget. So, and we think that we've captured all that we've talked about at the last Board of Education meeting in that objective. When you move into objective number three, it's still going to be focusing in the area of STEM, and one of the areas that we really want to continue to elaborate on is certainly looking at our STEM programs, K-12, but really trying to educate the community on all the multiple dimensions of STEM education. So oftentimes, we'll hear parents just talking about coding, and that STEM is really so much more than coding, and so it's a way to try to just keep people abreast of all the different things that we do to cover that area. We're gonna continue to implement our next-generation science standards in K-8, and really, it's now a time to look at those assessments and to develop those assessments to make sure they align with the written and the taught curriculum. I think you'll recall Melinda Meyer talking a lot about the performance-based assessments that we have in place and that we need to continue to work on those as we move forward with those, implementing those standards. We're now ready to start developing the grade nine curriculum aligned with the next-generation standards. I think what's really important in regards to this objective is making sure that it aligns with our K-8 program, and so it's all the work that we've done, K-8, and how does that fit into grade nine, and really, where does those standards fit? So we know that grade nine will be the first area that we're gonna have to do those curriculum revisions, and then it's really developing a plan for the other courses, so what, would it look like in chemistry, what would it look like in physics? And we need to get through the nine first and then develop that plan for where we go from there. Certainly, in response to standard-based grading, we wanna really continue to research those best practices, and I think we heard loud and clear from the board that one of the areas that we wanna work on is the communication of what standard-based grading is, and really making sure that the teachers clearly express that to parents and then do some parent presentations and, you know, community education about standard-based grading, and I think that will then help us to guide our next steps and where we might wanna go in that area. When we look at number four, revise and implement, we're ready to move forward with our K-12 health curriculum. We've done those crosswalks, and so now we're ready to implement our new units of studies in grades three through five, which will begin in the fall, and we're very excited about that, and we'll be using our current health teachers to roll that out at each of the elementary schools, and the children will have it for one quarter, one trimester, and then they'll move to the next trimester at each of the elementary schools. We're gonna continue to draft the units in grades K through two, six through eight, and nine through twelve, and we'll continue that work. We'll continue to address our state mandates through our health curriculum and determine appropriate instructional venues for each of those topics, and then certainly, we're always gonna be looking at the staffing and the best models of instruction in regards to the health curriculum and the best ways to roll that out, in particular, at the elementary level. So we were able to do that with the current staff that we have, but as we move forward, will we be able to sustain that, and we really need to take a close look at that. And then we'll continue to give our updates to the community as well to the board and really do some more parent presentations in regards to health and wellness. Number five is really, all students will graduate with a technology, technological knowledge and skills to succeed in a dynamic and complex global society. You're gonna see many of those objectives are the same in regards to the professional learning opportunities and really honing in on that transformation of learning, and then I think what's important is we're gonna continue to implement and revise our digital citizenship curriculum. We know that's a living document, we know that we have to continue to address that. We constantly are taking in student voice and parent perspective and teacher perspective as, as we're keeping that curriculum alive and moving forward. We'll continue to use our online courses where appropriate and expand those learning opportunities for students. So many of the students still really would rather engage in that classroom time with teachers, and they don't wanna take those online courses, so, but they are available, and the guidance counselors always have opportunities to discuss those with students. As we look at number eight, it's really ready to develop and initiate a plan for the implementation of the learning management system. We've already identified the system that we wanna move forward with, and so now it's really talking about if we can move this forward in the budget for next year, what would that plan look like, and how would we pilot that, and who would be getting training on that, and certainly, anything if possible that we could do to start some of that training, we would do as well. RTI is at a core of what we continue to do to make sure that we meet the needs of all students. It's one of the state mandates, but it's also something that we believe strongly in here in New Canaan. We'll continue to make sure that we are reviewing our, our data and making sure that we're meeting those needs of those students. We have our RTI committee, we meet regularly, we go through our guidebook, we have an electronic platform that we utilize, we're constantly tweaking all of that. I think probably the biggest changes you're gonna see is really within that SAPPLE. So the next step there is, you know, now we've run the K through five report card indicators in regards to SAPPLE, so now it's really taking a look at the data that we've collected, and then how do we ensure success for students from a social-emotional learning perspective? And now that we've got one year of data, I think we'll be able to be really proactive in regards to moving that forward. And then we're also ready to kind of look at Saks. So right now, our report card goes up through K-5, and now it will be a matter of taking a look at Saks and really taking a look at their current behavior matrix, and where does that apply in with SAPPLE, and what's our next steps there. Last meeting, I had an opportunity to speak about number seven, which is in regards to where we would want students to perform in world languages, and you'll see that we're gonna continue to monitor the percentage of students participating in the variety of world languages, nine through twelve, and certainly that distribution of grades six through eight. I think the biggest shift you'll see here, which we talked about last week, is we're gonna revise B, which is really where we were looking at the number, the speaking portion of where students were performing on assessments, but now we're gonna shift it to monitoring the number of students graduating with a seal of biliteracy. It's actually a more rigorous objective, so certainly, we're looking to see that students are performing at an intermediate high level. In the last objective, it was only speaking about the speaking portion, now it'll be measuring not only the speaking portion, but the listening portion, the reading portion, and the writing portion, and that they have to perform at a certain level in order to get that seal of biliteracy. So we feel that once we start communicating that out to students, I think we're gonna have a lot of students who would be eager to graduate with that seal. And then certainly, we spoke about this at the last board meeting as well, is we really do, we've determined some of the best ways to move forward with that current freshman class that will finish their course sequence by juniors, and what will we do with them for that senior year, so it's really establishing ahead of the game what we want those students to have that opportunity to do. Number eight is really looking at VPA, our visual and performing arts. So this is a new objective completely, so based, begin revisions on the K-12 music and art curriculum based on the crosswalk between national core standards, the New Canaan Public Schools curriculum, and best practices. And so it's really important for us to establish a timeline that includes both short and long-term goals, and then it's once again, begin drafting out those units of study in K-4 and 58 and 912, and then really make sure that we evaluate our current staffing and determine the best models of instruction for music and art in all of those areas. So we'll be looking forward to having Mr. Sneeth come back to the Board of Ed next year and give us updates in regards to where we are with visual and performing arts. Number nine is in regards to the alternate instructional, the afternoon instruction program, AIP, and I'm not sure, Darlene, if there's anything that you wanna address in this area?
Yes, so we've added an objective in terms of developing and broadening the current program that's in existence into a full-day alternative instructional program for students in need, and underneath that, some of the bullet points to include on the topic of a curriculum, a parallel curriculum to the current New Canaan Public Schools traditional programming that has fidelity and that allows for the learning and emotional circumstances of our kids, also to provide for a robust clinical component to the program towards student success, and to allow for students in the program to participate in our extracurricular activities and receive a New Canaan Public Schools diploma. Goals of the objective.
We're on to goal number two, but happy to answer any questions that you might have on goal number one before we move on.
Any questions?
Okay. So goal number two is to improve achievement, service, and relationships through communication that is responsive, clear, timely, and inclusive. You'll see that those objectives are remaining the same as we move forward with just a small tweak in continuing that professional learning for Board of Ed members, administrators, and the community related to emotional intelligence. So it's gonna be important for us to continue to broaden all the people in educating all that we do in regards to meeting the needs of the whole child. That's it for goal number two at this point. Happy to answer any questions? No changes? Think you're good? Okay? I'm not gonna go back to nineteen sixty-one, but, you know, we could date back if you guys want.
Please don't.
Wait for my assessment report in the fall. Got some good ideas. But no, goal number three is to promote and support innovative and exemplary research-based professional learning practices in order to continuously enhance student teaching and extend learning. So really, this is about TEPEL, this is really at the core of what we do, you know, the teacher evaluation and professional learning, and so we obviously wanna continue to support TEPEL, to continue to train our additional, in addition to our administrators, but also our other layer of leaders who are out there collaborating and coaching teachers regularly. Certainly, we're gonna continue to review the tri-state report with administrators and certainly with the staff, and we'll identify those recommendations for future action. Goal number four, promote an environment that fosters respect, ethical behavior, and responsible global citizenship. So this is a goal that you will see some objectives changed, so now we're ready to review, revise, and implement school and district climate plans system-wide. We're gonna continue to use the SAPPLE program and that framework to guide and support responsive teaching and school services and school climate, and we're really ready to develop and begin implementation of emotional intelligence in grades K through eight, and so you'll see that connected back over with goal number three, or goal number two, excuse me, where we really have to start educating the community about all that we're doing in emotional intelligence. As you'll recall, this was a year of training for teachers and getting teachers to understand in grades K through eight, all about emotional intelligence, certainly looking at ruler and those anchor tools. And so now we've got a plan that we're gonna begin to roll out for grades K through eight. It'll probably be over the course of two years, there's about four anchor tools, we'll probably start with two of the anchor tools next year, get the teachers really feeling strongly about them, and the lessons that would go along with them, and begin that implementation. We're now in the process of moving forward with the high school, so they went through their training in March, and then they'll begin moving forward with their training next year, and so all that the staff did at the K-8 level will now begin at the high school level, and they'll be moving forward with that training. And then certainly, it's continuing to provide some professional learning opportunities and research-based prevention intervention and reporting protocols, and then it's continued to focus on school climate initiatives centered on student voice and ownership as contributing members of the school community. We find this really beneficial, really, doing those focus groups with students gives us a great perspective of some of the areas that we need to move forward in working with them. So those are really, that's the change in objective number one, and then certainly, in objective number two, the only shift in that one, continue to analyze and update safety and security plans and practices. I know that we've done extensive presentations to the board, but it's really coming back and taking a look at the Alice training, which we'll host and participate in this summer, and then it will be a matter of trying to figure out what's appropriate at each of those levels, what's appropriate at K-4, what's appropriate at 58, and what's appropriate at 912.
You may recall back in November when the Crisis Advisory Board members came to the board to talk about their work and initiatives, things that are happening, both Joanne Rocco and Steve Bedard had attended the Alice training that past summer and felt that it was certainly worth people learning more about, a training that was very informative and helpful. So while we're not sure what it'll look like at each of the different levels, we decided this year to, to host, in July, we'll have a group coming, CAB members from across the district, representative staff from the, from each of the buildings, both of our SROs are going to attend, and then we'll bring that information back to the Crisis Advisory Board and look at the protocols and make some updates, so.
And then, goal five will remain the same, promote and practice good stewardship for all district resources in a manner that's supportive, that supports safe and healthy environments and optimizes student learning, and as you can see there, there were very few changes in those objectives as well.
Just very happily, we crossed off the Saks building project since it is completed.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Crenti. If I could get a motion to approve as a first read, the two thousand eighteen, nineteen district goals and objectives. Brendan, second, Jen, and we will have another read of these at a later board meeting, so we can vote to approve or not. Thank you. All right. Moving on to contract signature authorization. The Board of Education moves to authorize Brian and Lutzi, Superintendent of Schools, and Joanne Keating, Director of Finance and Operations, to sign contracts on behalf of the Board of Education effective July one, two thousand eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Do I have a motion to approve? Katrina, second, Hazel. Any discussion?
But just to share, this is an annual approval that we do. We do typically, the board uses a second meeting in June to do this, and it just allows Joanne and I, Dr. Keating and I, to continue the operation of the district as we go through.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to Board of Ed Policy Number 4,000 First Read. Before I go ask for a motion, I thought it's worth mentioning Tom has done a great job in leading this committee in revising policies, and I'm going to give you the floor to kind of make a few comments before I ask for a motion.
Sure. This, as mentioned, this is Series 4,000 personnel. It's been several months in the works, but I think we have a document here that we're confident in. We invited the board to review it last week in a government's committee meeting. We'll have a second committee meeting to allow the board another review, and that will take place before the next Board of Ed meeting on July 16. At that meeting, we anticipate bringing it forward for a second read and approval.
So you all received these in your Friday notes, so if there's any questions or comments? Let me move on actually first to the motion. If I could get a motion to approve as a first read the updated and revised Board of Education Series 4,000 policies. Could I get a motion? Brendan, Second, Hazel. Okay. Are there any, before we move on, are there any questions or comments before we move on?
I'd like to just make a brief comment just to, again, to say thank you to the Governance Committee. Working through CAE, there are many advantages to doing that, one of which is the renumbering of the policies so that they are aligned when changes do come through state mandates or other things. The policies are aligned numerically, so CAE can coordinate that with us and let us know if there are mandated policies and things that have to go in. The Series 4,000 is an interesting one because it is personnel. Much of personnel is governed by the contracts that are negotiated, other things we have in the district. But for CAE, they sent us a packet of, it seemed to be several thousand pages, and so Tom, Katrina, Deanna, the committee, and certainly with Gary's help, went through those several thousand pages and really found the policies that were appropriate and important for New Canaan to have for the Board of Ed. The effort took some time, but I think it was well worth it. And so as you go through the policies, the focus has been if it's law that we, that the Board of Education must follow, then it doesn't have to be duplicated in policy. You'll notice the protocol of this is the highlighted areas are things that are new in the policy. There are certain, there are crossouts that are included there as well, and at the top of most of them is something in italics that just describes if it's a new policy, if it's an existing policy that's been renumbered, or if it's a mandated policy that's been included. So as you go through it, certainly let us know if you have any questions, and we'll continue the conversation. But I wanted to say thank you for all of that work to take over several thousand pages to appropriately, approximately 70, I believe. Really took some time and effort. Much appreciated.
It's great beach reading. All right. Moving on to Board of Ed schedule of meetings. You had in your Friday packet the schedule for next year's meeting. Some of them were already approved, but if I could get a motion to approve as a first read the 2019 meeting schedule of the Board of Education? Jen, Second. Tom? Okay. Any questions or comments? It's just a first read. Okay, saying none. We'll move on to comments from the public. Anyone wishing to address the public? Spencer?
Hello, everyone. My name is Spencer Reeves, and I'm taking off my employee hat and putting on my student hat here for a moment. And I know people go different directions for the summer, so I just wanted to take a moment and say a few words of thanks to all of you. First off, I want to thank you for all that you all have taught me over the past two years. I learned more about town government than I imagined I ever would have, and I'm very grateful because it lit a civic fire in me and has given me a desire to very possibly pursue local government at the least in the future, which I hope to continue. Also, I want to thank you all from the heart of my heart for all that you do for us as students sitting here. I understand that what you all do can be very fun and rewarding, but it can also be challenging and difficult, and somehow everyone comes together always to make the right decision, and it's because of us. It's not because of what you all have in your heads is what should be the right decision. It's because of us, the students, who we are. And no one ever makes a decision without thinking about how it can impact our learning, and that's not something that can be said for every Board of Education in Connecticut or the country. So thank you all so much, and for those of you who will be here in the summer, see you then. If not, have a great summer.
Spencer, thank you so much. You know, we have been so privileged to have you on the staff here, working and helping make sure that these meetings function so well, and I know I've had fire drills with you and other roles I've had where he's always come to the rescue to make sure that, you know, the technology that functions in this building works for the events that we're running. So thank you. It's going to be a huge loss for the district to see, I see you at every meeting. I keep saying, oh, my gosh, what else is Spencer working on? Every time I go somewhere in the community, Spencer Reeves is there. So we have been so blessed to have you as part of this group, so. And we look forward to welcoming Teo for next year. So anyone else want to? Okay, thank you. So announcements and future business. Dr. Lutze?
Sure. There are a few things happening in the district this week. We have our launch graduation on Thursday morning at 8:30, where our students who are participating in the launch program will be graduating here. It's a wonderful ceremony for them. We have a graduation that afternoon at 5 o'clock at Dunning Field, and then the following morning, we have our SACS moving up ceremony with our eighth graders, which will be here in the gym. So right now, most of our seniors are out on internship. Those few that aren't are here taking exams along with the rest of our high school folks, and that wraps up this week as well. So lots happening. We are looking at, I believe, June 16 for the next Board of Education meeting. There were two choices between the 16th and the 23rd, as you'll recall, and we had, I think, Deanna had spoken with some of the board members around availability, and the 16th seems to be the day that people are most available. So we will go forward with that. At that meeting, we'll have second readings of the things that came up tonight, the Board of Ed meeting schedule, the policy series, our district goals and objectives, and we're also talking with Lizanne about having a world languages update regarding the goals and objectives for our world language proficiency with our students. There you have it.
All right. Thank you. So if I could get a motion to adjourn to executive session in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes 1-210B9. The subject to be discussed is negotiations. Could I have a motion? Hazel, Second. Katrina, all those in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you. All right. Let's get on.